Cover the schools if the board so desires to put the budget in play. That's actually where I've been spending most of my time, putting that together. So we'll talk more about that. We hope to have that done very soon. Article five is a request-
Carol's two. Carol's one. David's two.
Article five is presented by the library trustees. It's for a compensation schedule for the library staff. As presented, it also has the second part of it. And I don't know if you do this with one motion or two, but there's money in there for the school costing guards at an hourly increase. Do you typically do one motion for the article?
Yes.
Okay. And then the same thing on the bottom. There must have been a settlement with the fire union. And for call firefighters, I should say, and firefighters and TAs setting their wage schedules as outlined in the article. I'm not going to review all of it. If there's questions, we could try to help answer the questions. Article number six is the article for the state law requires elected officials to be paid in an article by approval of town meeting. And there is your elected officials who receive a stipend. With one elected official, the town clerk is a full-time employee. Article seven is a statutory article, and I think at some point could be addressed where there's a new law on municipal reform. You don't have to re-up revolving funds year after year. So these are revolving funds that you have. Basically, town meeting is setting the cap on the revolving funds or the spending limits. Maybe going forward, town council would draft something to address that. Article eight is relative submitted by the assessors for exemptions for, as the article describes, for blind, elderly, widowed, and disabled veterans for the next fiscal year. That has to be presented each year to town meeting to provide those exemptions. Article number nine is the schools, I know in speaking with the superintendent and school business manager, put the transportation out to bid. They're going to ask for a five-year contract, and those numbers are in the budget for article number nine. So that's a request for the funding the school transportation budget. Article 10 is to see if the town appropriate the excess premium from the sale of bonds for capital projects. And I don't have much information on that unless that's, is that what the capital budget committee uses to fund their articles?
It's, this article is asking, the town does get some premiums back when they sell bonds, and the article is asking to take that, and it's not a large amount of money. They're asking to take that money and apply it to the projects that are being bonded, apply it to the debt service rather than have it flow to the general fund.
Okay. So it's not going to be $1.6 million. It'll be some number that the financial advisor, or that when the bonds are sold, there'll be a number when they round off the borrowing to sell the debt. It'll be a small amount of money. So that's a great article to have for the town and to plan ahead on using those proceeds. Article 11 is a bylaw amendment, and it's a petition article if I'm not mistaken, a citizen's petition article. And I would yield to town council or someone to explain it. I have a sense of what the article intimates.
Mr. Chairman, this article was submitted as a petition article, signed by 10 voters, so it's on the annual town meeting warrant. What the article seeks to do is to create a town bylaw that directs the finance committee essentially to agree with the school committee's budget number, and then it gets presented to town meeting. And it's a fairly detailed article. East Bridgewater is a little bit unusual because we do not have a charter. And in the absence of a charter, the authority of various boards and committees really comes from state statute. And by state statute, the finance committee's sole job is to review issues put before town meeting that can impact the town's finances. So essentially, what the article seeks to do is to limit the finance committee's ability to review the budget and make recommendations to town meeting. And if it were to pass, if we take out the school portion of the budget, somewhere between 40% and 50% of the overall budget, you're really taking away all practical authority of the finance committee. I've offered the opinion to the board that this article is illegal because it would conflict with state law. And I've suggested that and had a discussion with the moderator to that effect as well.
Thank you. Article 12 is an article that I've learned a little bit about since I've been here that apparently passed town meeting at one point. Because it requires a home rule petition, it went to the legislature. The legislature never voted on it for whatever reason, so it's being brought by the board to select them for the town to reconsider the article. The next few articles are about transferring money from free cash. The first is for the schools. The amount of money, the $6,219.19, is for the school committee for the Spent Reserve Fund. Article 14 is to transfer the sum of $7,200 for archival data services that are provided to the town. Article 15 is to transfer the sum of $8,860 for security equipment mounts for installing additional cameras outside the town hall building for security improvements. That's requested by the chief of police. Article 16 is a request of the town clerk for $14,201 for new voting booths. Apparently, your voting booths are a little antiquated. This will modernize the voting process. Article 17 is to, it's to transfer money from the ambulance fund, the sum of $16,900 for ballistic armor, 13 cents for the firefighters, request to the fire chief. Article 18 is a request of the Board of Public Works. You can tell where I used to work. This is a request for the director, from the Director of Public Works, to transfer $20,000 from free cash for flashing school signs for four of them to help with school safety. Article 19 is to transfer from free cash the sum of $20,860 for a wheelchair ramp at the Mitchell Elementary School for ADA compliance. Article number 20 is to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash $21,000 for a telephone system upgrade in the police department. Article 21 is to transfer from free cash $24,000 for the contract of retirement, and it's a contractual obligation the town has when someone retires. Article 22 is to transfer $24,500 from free cash for some server room improvements or renovations and for consolidating the existing police and town hall computer servers with one room located in the police station. That's a request of the police chief. Article 23 is to see if the town will transfer $36,060 from free cash for security cameras and for replacing those security cameras at the central school for the school committee. Article 24 is to see if the town will transfer from the ambulance fund $45,700 for a new SUV, for replacing the existing fire SUV in the fire department. Article 25 is to see if the town will transfer the sum of $46,124 for a police cruiser. And article 26 is to see if the town will transfer the sum of $49,000 from free cash for some software updates and installing the Office 365 migration, which would be a good thing. That's brought forward by the IT director. Article 27 is a request of the fire chief to transfer from the ambulance fund $65,000 for upgrading the radio system and to install bidirectional antenna, or it's a repeater system, at the Mitchell School, which will help with school communications. And I had a brief conversation with the fire chief and with the superintendent about that. Article 28 is to see if the town will transfer from water enterprise retained earnings, that's the term for enterprise fund free cash, the sum of $73,500 for generator and electrical upgrades at the water, it must be at the treatment facility. Article 29 is to appropriate $50,000 for a Mitchell School vestibule FOB system. I'm sure that's for security, I would assume, and to borrow the sum of $50,000 to provide that FOB system, FOB system.
That's a two-thirds vote.
Yeah, borrowing, that's, all borrowing would be two-thirds. Thank you, John. To see, article 30 is to appropriate the sum of $73,417, another borrowing article for Central School and Mitchell School for wireless upgrades. So that would be a bonding article, too, and it's town council intimated a two-thirds vote. Article 31 is a request of the IT director to appropriate $132,500 for the computer infrastructure upgrade. That would be a bonding article as well for the $132,500. Article 32 is for the sum of $170,000 to be borrowed for a junior, senior high school server replacement. That's article 32 for the school committee.
Robert.
I'm sorry.
Can I ask a question, or should they wait till the end?
I'd ask if it's with the chair.
Article 31 and 32, what we're doing at the schools is pretty much the same thing that the town's doing, so I'm just wondering if we should just word it the same way. The town is upgrading the servers, switches, storage. The school is upgrading the servers, switches, storage. So it just, I, if there's still time, it just may make sense to word it the same way.
Mr. Chairman, if there's time, I think I would, through town council, would work with bond council and our treasurer. Typically, if you're going to borrow, all these articles should be at least reviewed by bond council, and they'll even help with the motions to make sure we're doing it appropriately. So I would ask them, and if we can combine them into one, or, and make two motions out of one article, or leave it as two articles, but maybe worded the same. If town council would approve, I would go with Melissa to talk to our bond council.
It really needs to stay as two separate articles at this point, but we certainly have time before we post the warrant. I think it's Friday to make minor changes in the language. I mean, I think they do say generally the same thing as Mr. Shea indicated.
And I can reach bond council tomorrow, I'm sure.
And is there an issue with the servers, though? I mean, it's only, like, how old is?
The servers in the school are not new when the school was, no, those servers are old. Both the town and the school is running on an operating system, 2008, that will not be serviced by Microsoft as of January 14, 2020. Anything else, Rob?
No, I agree. I mean, for all intents and purposes, we're trying to do the same thing in the same timeframe. The two articles really should reflect each other.
Okay. So they'll remain separate, but I will get counsel from bond council on the articles how they're written and tell them that it's the same purpose. Article 33 is also a borrowing article for road repairs that would supplement Chapter 90 money for $517,892, as requested by the Board of Public Works. Article 34 is a zoning article, changing the existing zoning district that's zoned currently industrial I-1 to residential 1-R1, and it's shown on the map in the warrant. That would take two-thirds vote?
Yes.
Okay. As well. And article 34, article 35 is again a zoning change, and it's to change the zoning district I-1. I guess it goes hand in hand with article 34?
They're similar, right? It's just that article 35 is another portion of the map, and one section is seeking a change from I-1 to R-1, and then that other section is seeking to be changed from I-1 to R-2.
Okay. So those are zoning articles, both take two-thirds vote. They're presented by the planning board, or the planning board at least makes a recommendation on those articles. Article 36 is a housekeeping or correcting article that corrects some errors that was, that apparently go back to 1987, and it's requesting to replace all residential ARA references with resident 1-R1, and all residents of B-RB references with residence 2-R2, and to add a new reference, residence section 3-R3, to correctly reflect zoning district changes that were made in 1987 when the annual town meeting voted your zoning amendments. And it's explained, or this is how it would show in your zoning bylaw, article 36. Article 37 is another amendment to your zoning bylaws, and it's a request of the planning board, and it would amend the general protective provisions as outlined for an accessory family unit. So, and the article describes what the section, the new addition to the general protective provisions provides for throughout article 37. Article 38 is to amend the zoning bylaws making the district changes relative to floodplain and wetlands protection districts. And I guess it describes it here. I don't know if a map is required, if there's a map available for article 38 that might help.
I think it's the, I think it's just the changes that are highlighted.
The lang, oh, it's just the overlay district.
Highlighted changes. There's a definition of the floodplain, and then they also swapping out the, to go in front of the conservation commissions instead of, conservation commission instead of the board appeals in the, in the section two.
Okay. Article 39 is another zoning change, requiring a change in the general protective provisions. This is presented by the planning board?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, there it is. Planning board, and it's lengthy bylaw, but it's all, the changes are all noted in the bylaw as printed. And that would be the conclusion, and that's a two-thirds vote as well.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions on any of the articles while we're all here? Any concerns, changes, anything? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. We'll move on to our joint appointment with the finance committee to review and approve Chapter 44, Section 33B transfers. The finance committee would like to come up?
I think, Mr. Chairman, I think you guys vote them separately. I'm not sure it's a joint vote, but I, I mean, if you have a tradition, how you vote them, it wouldn't matter.
I think they usually come up and vote.
Oh, yes. Mr. Chairman, if I may, to just, you, after this, you might want to vote to then close the warrant as it was presented with minor edits in it. So either after this or, I won't let you forget. Rebecca won't let me forget.
Yes. Do you need a coffee? How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Thanks for coming in.
Hello.
Now, the finance committee already vote?
The finance committee voted to approve the transfers as written.
Okay. And do you want to go over a few of them, or?
We've done it quite extensively.
Yeah.
I think, is the ones we have to sign? Oh, okay. Can I bring those back to have them signed in there? Okay. No, I think all of them looked good.
All right.
Do you have any, anyone have any questions?
See, if the board, this is relatively new with municipal reform. The town accountant looks at budgets and works with the finance committee to make changes to, for budgetary purposes in the current fiscal year. So these are typically routine, and it means that we have funding to make the changes, so it has no fiscal impact on the budget.
All right, thank you. So, finance committee voted unanimously?
The finance committee voted unanimously to approve the transfers.
Now we need to vote on it on our end.
Yep. Yeah, because you have to sign and we have to sign.
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request for the transfer of Chapter 44, Section 23B as printed.
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. I'll take a motion to close out the warrant for the special and annual town meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I vote to close out the special town meeting as printed.
Any further discussion?
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair, I would ask if you would mind amending the motion to say with, there possibly would be legal edits by town council and a review, so if you would allow that, would make it a little easier for us.
I'll amend the last motion.
I'll amend it to approve the special town meeting with possible legal changes by town council.
All right.
Second.
And any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I vote to close the annual town meeting as printed with minor adjustments, and again with the possibility of legal changes by town council.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to our action.
Are we going to have Rocko do the budget presentation, or are we not doing that?
You want to do the budget presentation now?
Yeah, I can do it.
Yeah. Want to do it now, sure?
Yeah. If I can come forward, and we're going to place it on the screen there.
Is that all right? I didn't want to.
Oh, no. I don't have my glasses on and completely missed that, sorry.
And I, actually, I'm going to, so if we can get it up on the screen, Ryan and Rebecca can help. So actually, I'm going to present, I want to get, I wanted to get the budget out there and play. We all have been doing a lot of work, the fiscal team, the school. I've been working with both Liz and John on the budget, and we've made a lot of progress. We've also had a lot of support from the staff, you know, the fiscal team, Phyllis, Melissa, Paula, and I've had a lot of support from Michelle and Laura on the finance committee. We've been all working together to try to get this done, because it is very difficult to transition here, especially ping it up where somebody else left off this budget. So I'm going to present a little bit on the town side, and then Liz will come forward to speak for the school, or John, I don't know how they're going to do it, but we thought we'd do this just to put it in play. We've been working, all been working together, and I think it's very important, so. And what I present tonight, there might be some minor tweaking, because again, it's putting all of our pieces together on the town side from what we had. I've been, and we stay in close contact with each of the teams, the finance committee, the fiscal team, and with the schools as well, so we're all working on this. So I've had a lot of support going through this budget, and it's really been fun to put it together. We've got some work to do, there's a little bit of pressure, because your budget message went out December 18, 2018, for fiscal 19, or for fiscal 20, and I've been involved with this for about the last month or so. So we'll go to the first slide. I'm going to, I'm trying to simplify this. I mean, there's a lot of information. I saw your warrant, and when the budget went in there, you have several years of fiscal history, probably a lot more information than I would say that I have seen, because it's all not necessary for town meeting. And the sake of being transparent, that's a very good thing, but in terms of getting the public engaged a little bit, I try to simplify it a little bit. And I'll start with revenues, and there's really only four revenue categories. I'm not sure how much you've covered. And I think every town administrator that would present budgets would do it his own or her own way, so this is the way I've been accustomed to do it in recent history. We're focusing on actually where it says 20 column, and to try to put things in perspective, we show what it was last year and what it was being, what it is being estimated for fiscal 20, and then we show a little bit about what the change is. So we can respond to questions tonight. I know there's a, there's a strong team behind me that can help with questions that I can't answer. But basically, the levy is presented as allowed by law. You see the first line in an estimated FY20 column? It says that the number is 27,320,944, and that number, if you look in the recap line, FY19, that's the number that was approved last year. And then ultimately, with Prop 2 and 1/2, you multiply the number by 2 and 1/2 percent, and you get then the subtotal for the levy. You add the new growth. The new growth number comes from the assessors, and they, the chief assessor gives us an estimate what they think it is, and these are conservative estimates. So the levy limit for fiscal 20 is 28,228. There's a debt exclusion, just to remind everybody, that's money that was voted on and approved by the voters to go of and beyond the constraints of Prop 2 and 1/2. So the levy is 31,238,853. So it's roughly a 3% increase next year compared to last year's levy. So I'll go through this, and you can ask questions later. We can come back to the slides if you'd like. State aid on the next slide. Basically, this is probably the one that fluctuates the least, although it seems like it's going, going forward in the right direction, there's going to be more revenue. So the state aid, looking at the FY19, the FY20 column, just so you're aware that there's been three budgets so far, the governor's, the House Ways and Mean, and then the House budget. Each budget that was approved, the last one approved was a little bit more money. So tomorrow, the Senate starts to deliberate, the 21st of May, and hopefully, they'll continue that trend. So that's kind of another way to say that these numbers are pretty conservative as well, and I think it'll be more at the end. Especially politically, the Senate doesn't want to do worse than the House, so typically, those numbers will go up. What we're presenting is the bottom line of $12,146. It's about a $2.3 million increase from last year. I say that's a fair conservative estimate. Hopefully, it'll be more going forward, and if it is more, that's where, that's one of the numbers, if it became higher than what we're guessing going forward in the budget, it would become free cash, the extra additional aid. So I think the good news is that, especially on the Chapter 70 money, the state's really working hard to help the schools, but that comes through the cherry sheet on the chapter, Chapter 70 money, so that could be good for us. And I think it's important to point out, there's a library grant there that goes directly to the library, so it's not money that gets appropriated, but that's an additional amount that the library gets to use for the services to the residents in town. Then, of course, gives you, the state gives you money, the $12,700, but they take some back, and that's really for the MBTA assessments or your regional transportation. They take some for county government and those kinds of things. So that's why we net out. We go from $12.7 million to $12.1 million. The next slide is on local receipts, and these numbers, basically, I worked with the town accountant closely on these numbers. It looks like it's a, it's on the higher end or less conservative maybe than you've had in the past, but I think they're doable numbers based on what the town accountant might look at in terms of reviewing existing collections. I also look back in your operating statement for fiscal 16. These numbers aren't that far off, which to me implies that they're going to be higher than projected, or this target is close to where they're going to be. So, and typically, the description of these local receipts, the motor vehicle excise tax is usually the highest amount. I think that's probably over 60, maybe 70% of that money. So depending on when the state gets out the bills, sometimes there's a little bit of a lull in terms of how they send the assessments to the town. They create the bills, we send the bills out and collect the money. So with penalties and interest, the interest rates are going up slightly. It used to be less than 1%. I think it's been climbing, so we expect new revenues there. The departmental fees are being impacted by the permits for solar arrays, and then the licensing permits, licensing and permits, we have a modest increase there. The other revenue is where the investment income is included, so hopefully, you know, that's still, I think, a fair number, maybe less conservative than you've had in the past, but I think this increase of $240,000 so that your local receipts become $3,31569. And then there's the fourth category, so I covered very briefly the levy, the local receipts, and state aid. This is the fourth category, and it's kind of a catch-all, all of the other accounts. And you can see, this is where your money goes into the capital stabilization to offset that debt, according to your bylaw, and that's the 900, looking at the FY90 column, the It has the ambulance funds, the loan program that you have, in fact, there's discussion now, that the loan repayment fund has generated enough revenue that the Board of Health can now look at further loans going forward, and we'll have a lot more to say about that. We just had our first meeting to discuss that, but that's a good thing for the town. Then you have the water receipts. It's an enterprise fund. Those funds, those three funds are used to offset the water budget. The indirect costs are revenues to the town, because that's the cost that the enterprise fund pays to the general fund for the services they get from the town. And I guess the highlight or the low light, I would say, on this slide is the challenges that the DPW faces, and I've had some discussions with John, the DPW director, on your solid waste. So this is asking to increase that budget by the $200,000 because of the problems with the revenues meeting the expectation of the expenses. So there'll be a lot more to say about that, but this money is needed and to help offset some of the issues that we're having with the solid waste account. And then a couple more slides, and I'll be done. I wanted to show this slide. This is fixed costs, and I guess it's fixed cost except for the top, the reserve fund. The reserve fund is the fund that the finance committee uses for unforeseen extraordinary charges during the year. That number, when it comes out in the budget, will be a little bit lower. I think the vote, the vote on that ultimately was $135,000. That's why there's going to be some little tweaking in the budget, but that's money that they have authorization to fund unforeseen and extraordinary expenses. The good news is that because of the municipal relief transfers, like the ones you just voted, typically now don't have to go to look for other means for transferring. But the rest of these numbers from the insurance, the liability, workers' comp, the audit, health insurance, we can talk about any of those if you have any questions. Those are numbers, the point of this slide is, these are numbers that when we make budget cuts, you can't cut these numbers. These are fixed costs, and they are what they are, and to keep town government going, they have to be paid for. So your health insurance with the So your health insurance with the GIC has gone up a little bit. Retirement assessment will continue to go up, I think Plymouth County is going to have the pension system, the unfunded pension obligation funded by 2032, I think, or 2033. And the only highlight here for me is that you've been budgeting historically 50,000 for snow and ice. I can tell you, looking back over 10 years, that number's been, it averages 402,000. I think at some point, while I didn't have the time to do the research, I would suggest going forward, you look at budgeting a more accurate number, because even though the state says you can raise it on the recap, you know, that, that makes it a little more complicated, maybe not as transparent, seeing what it really costs you. So, I'm not saying it's a bad strategy either, I guess it's a good strategy, and I've not seen it, but I think in terms of the public viewing, the number 50,000, if they think that's what we've spent on snow and ice, and I'm telling you, for the last 10 years, you averaged 402,000. The high was in 215, I think it was like 750,000. And one year, the least that I've seen in your last 10 years that you got away with snow and ice was $110,000. And so, I think the bottom line, and the final slide basically says, you have a balanced budget. I mean, it's, it's with minor tweaks, that's the good news, because it didn't come easy. It was, it was nice for me to walk into a budget situation that was practically done. I feel bad though, because when I start a budget, I start in September, October, I build that budget, and when I'm presenting it, I have the confidence and knowledge of every penny in the budget, I don't, I can't say that here. But I have the confidence, you have a very strong team here, and if there's any questions about any of the departmental budgets, I don't think that would be an issue, so the budget's in balance. And what I'd like to do now is yield to Superintendent Liz Legault to talk a little bit about the school budget, and I think that's it for now, and I, we can respond to questions together.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, we could not sync tonight with PowerPoint, because we used Google Slides though.
Oh, I use Google Slides now too, so easy.
We couldn't sync our report, but we took a few slides from...
I got it. Yeah, we, we'll take one here.
We took our presentation that we did on March 5th to certify our budget with the school committee, and I just put four or five slides together, if anybody wants to press this out.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And we just put a little bit, we started with our, thank you very much for having us this evening, Rocco. It's been a pleasure working with you so far, I hope that we can continue going forward and make some great things happen. I think that we already have, working with the department heads have been great the last couple of months, so I want to thank them as well, and we've had great conversation moving forward. So we start with our, just at a glance, our strategic plan. We have a five-year strategic plan that is actually up this year, and we will be working with our team. We talk about, our goals and our strategic plan is based on curriculum instruction, social, emotional wellness, professional development and technology. And that's how we drive our, our budget, by looking at those areas, trying to find out where we need to place our funding and allocate for student spending, and make sure the instructional strategies are created through the curriculum instruction. Part of our plan with our goals, our social, emotional wellness, as you know, is, it's going to take a lot more allocating funds in the next few years, and we're seeing that grow. Working with our kid in need program, we're seeing a lot more students that are in need of services, and not just to have a student with an IEP. We're seeing a lot of students having social or emotional wellbeing issues. We're even seeing students or families having a lot of issues with mental illness, which is then, you know, takes a toll on a child, regardless of pre-K through 12. So we're working with that and looking at how to adjust our budget to meet the needs of not only our students, but their families. Our professional development, we have a professional development cycle, our curriculum cycle that follows our professional development plan. Dr. Williams runs our professional development, we have a group of teachers that sits on the professional development. What that does is it provides all the staff with a comprehensive professional development plan, and opportunities for their growth for the instructional strategies that we'll be implementing through pre-K through 12 curriculum and instruction and services that we offer. Technology, as you saw tonight, we're, not only do we have technology in the classroom, we're one-to-one school district, but we're also upgrading our servers along with the town, so that we don't have any, pardon the expression, dead spots in any of the buildings, regardless of Central Mitchell or even the high school. Technology helps us for safety, it helps us increase capacity for our students to be able to do online learning. It also helps us save on purchasing materials for students by using apps. So we have purchased apps for different coursework. We also, we work with some online courses, if we can't offer it at the high school level, we are offering some more online, so the technology has to be upgraded, and you'll see, we have a five-year tech plan as well.
Going back to the social, emotional wellness, I mean, are these families not getting any services from any outside organization, I mean, is that what the issue is with some of these students?
There are some, there are some students that are receiving services, however, we're seeing a need. We're seeing an emotional need that probably far goes anything that we ever forecasted 20 years ago, 10 years ago, five years ago, we're just seeing a need. Not only do we have an opioid crisis, we have a mental illness crisis, and we're seeing it hit more and more with kids. We have children that are living with their grandparents, because their parents had no capacity either to take care of them or chose to move on. So a child has to live with that, and has to deal with that on a daily basis. Not to say that grandparents aren't great and wonderful to have in a child's life, but when you're missing a mother or father, or caretaker or adoptive parent, it's twice as hard on the child. We also have had some deaths of family members, fathers, mothers, grandparents, aunts, uncles, that a child has lived with or lives with, and that we're, we just had a child two weeks ago that we're working with. This child actually told our principal today, she's so happy that, that we're working so closely with her and the family, that she feels, you know, very supported as she gets ready to graduate. So, this is a need that probably we never saw coming 15 years ago. You know, I'd like to say that, you know, everything that I think about is curriculum instruction and meeting the needs of the kids, but this is really, if a student comes to school in trauma, he cannot, or she cannot learn, so we've got to figure out how to hit the trauma and help the student. We, some of our professional development this year was all about the traumatized child, so.
Thanks.
You're welcome. So, we have a curriculum cycle, this year was health and wellness. So this year, the needs for the budget was a little bit lower than it was for science at 157,000 a year and a half ago, to now, this will be a little bit less, because health and wellness is, we, we can do some things with physical education and the health classroom, which is not going to see the needs that new science curriculum would, or new social studies, which is going to be next year. The frameworks are out from DESI, from the Department of Education, Secondary and Elementary Education for the frameworks and the new social studies. Curriculum that we're going to see, that we're starting to look over, and Dr. Williams will then implement with the history teachers throughout K through 12 next year, and what we'll need to buy for that curriculum. So, it's a little bit off here and there, but now, you know, we'll gear up for next year. But this is our curriculum cycle, and we've done that over a six, seven-year period from where we began. So, and the next slide is where we are going tomorrow, this was part of our budget presentation. This year, for the 2020 salary, 17,699,604, certified staff. Non-salary, 3 million, that's all staff, pardon me, non-salary is 3,18291, specialized services. Our school budget total is 20,879,895. Our new busing contract, and we hope that we will get a five-year contract moving forward. This is a reduction from the $936,000 we had from a year ago. This is still with Lucini Bus Lines, and it's like coming in at 921,000, which we did not have that number when we, when we first did the budget on March 5th.
Congratulations on that.
Thank you, and that's, we'll go for five years, we're hoping to get that five years. The regional voc, we received those numbers from, from Rocco at 770,668. So that brings our total education budget to 22,571,563. What we've been trying to do is show differences between five, from our fiscal years from year to year, so that, and we've been projecting out. So this year, for FY19 to FY20 budget difference, our salary is 501,781 difference. Non-salary is 57,913, with a total 559,694. That's the total difference from last year. And then busing is, we saved $15,000 from last year. Our regional voc is an additional 19,502, and so our total, everything encompassing is 564,196 from FY19 to FY20. Then we did some budgeted projected increases from 2020 budget projection presented in 2017 at FinCom, and at the public hearing at the Board of Selectmen in 2018, I sat, and we had 615,660. Then we gave the 2020 budget projection presented in 2018 at FinCom Public Hearing and Board of Selectmen in 2019 Budget Meetings, was at 609,606. And those were projected for us, trying to give some type of stability, so you could see where we were going. We actually are coming in at 559,694, so we're saving, but we are projecting, we're not as conservative as others. I sort of pushed John a little bit to make sure that we can fit everything in, and... But it gives you an idea of where we're going to be as we're moving up. Our requested increase trend, in 2018, we asked for 4.31%. That was, if you remember, the, our new contract was coming in, and that's where we saw the big jump. In 2019, it was 2.93%, and then 2020, going into next year's, at 2.56%. I still would ask that I would think that, in the, in to come, that we're going to have to push that number off that 2s to support the schools, what we're trying to do. On the last page is our Chapter 70 funding, I think Rocco hit upon it. He is right, this is a big week up on the Hill. A couple of weeks ago, the school committee attended the day on the Hill, they pushed our senators and representatives. We're hoping for an increase in the 2020, this year at 250,000. And I think it was, Rocco had said it, about 250,000. That'll be a great stepping stone for us, and over the next five years, we should be looking at, I think, 1.2 million.
If everything goes according to plan and according to what the legislature is saying, we have been underfunded about 1.2, 1.5 million, so. If their goal is to get us up to that point, we could see another bump in 2021.
Wouldn't that be nice?
Yeah, yeah, because we're still, we're third from the bottom on PPE, which we're doing very well, I can say, from being third from the bottom, but we're East Bridgewater, and I certainly believe that we should be a little bit higher, and we should be moving that trend higher for the schools, to get support. Any questions?
The only thing I would add, that the numbers that the school presented are part of the balanced budget, so I didn't want to leave that, any questions, so that there wasn't any change to any of those numbers. And I apologize, I didn't have a handout, because I was tweaking until 5:25. But the presentation that I made will be online either tomorrow or the next day, it will make available to the public.
And if there's any other information that you feel that you would like, or Rocco, that you would like, we can switch up our, our slides, and we'll get Google Slides.
Yeah, that would help.
I think that, and being down at the schools for the town meeting, it'll be a little bit easier for us with our...
We'll check with Ryan too, because he said he can do it, so, I didn't know that.
I think you're on the spot, Ryan, don't worry about it.
And enrollment is pretty much stabilized through the years.
Yes, and we have, I can put an enrollment slide in that we had at our meeting, and we're looking, we're looking at about 2,300 students, and still is staying around that number. This year's graduating class is 133 students, right now, we're looking at 130, just because of some other issues. However, this is a very small class, next year will be added back up to 170, and then you'll see 166, I believe, and then we'll see a very large class coming, so.
And we're above our foundation, are we above that, the required spending from the state? I know that's been an issue in the past.
We're above.
Above, okay. Any other questions?
No, thank you, I've been...
Excellent, very good.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Move on to our action items.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the May 6, 2019, 6:30 Board of Selectmen's Meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the May 10, 2019, 9:00 p.m. Board of Selectmen's Meeting.
Second.
Any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the request from the Southeastern Regional Service Group to award a contract to W.B. Mason for paper supplies for a 12-month period commencing July 1, 2019.
Second.
Any further discussion? Nope, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the request of Southeastern Regional Service Group to award a contract to W.B. Mason for paper supplies for a 12-month period commencing July 1, 2019.
Second.
Any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve Southeastern Regional Service Group DPW Supplies Contract Award Sheet commencing July 1, 2019 for a 12-month period.
Second.
Any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the new schedule for the senior clerk in the Board of Selectmen's office as requested, and approve the request to modify the schedule at any time.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just to make everyone aware, that the senior clerk in the office, Lee, an excellent teammate for Rebecca, had some childcare issues and wanted to try to manage her working hours with managing her family issues, so she actually took a small reduction in pay. She's losing a little bit of her, her pay to make this accommodation. The good news is, is that she'll, this will be her schedule with your approval, but she will back up Rebecca when necessary on vacations and those kinds of things, so the staff won't, we won't be left without somebody covering the office, but I would recommend the board approve the request as presented.
Thank you. Any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Town of East Bridgewater Policy Against Unlawful Harassment, Sexual Harassment and Discrimination.
Second.
Any further discussion, Mr. Longa?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, so I looked at your existing policy, and it was a little dated, which is very common when you don't have, especially when you don't have a personnel director. So, so basically, what most town administrators do is they go right to the MCAD website, they have a model policy. We drafted that policy with Rebecca's help to fit East Bridgewater, gave it to town council, they made a few tweaks. And the timeliness of this, of your approval is important. We're going to do training on this issue, both for the supervisory staff and the employees, and we'll try to do other things like this, but it would be important for us to adopt the policy, because you certainly don't want a policy become an issue when you went to the MCAD. So this is the, I guess, the state of the art, and something that if they saw that we had this policy, then we would be in line with the best possible policy for sexual harassment discrimination. So I would urge you to approve this.
When was the last time it was updated, when it was created, years ago maybe?
Well, you mean updated in the town, or updated by the...
Yeah, in the town.
It was a few years ago.
Okay, all right, thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Anything else to add to the town administrator report?
I can, a couple of brief things, just so the board is aware, we are looking at filling the vacancy of the veterans' office, and I do have a team, let me just make sure I don't forget anybody. We have a team, we have 18 applications, the team is the police chief and fire chief, they deal with a lot of veterans, and I thought they would be helpful to me to be part of the team. We also have Nancy Hill, the Council on Aging Director, because she works with a lot of seniors, and both the Veteran Services Officer and the Council on Aging can kind of work together to support veterans. And then, the fifth person is, in addition to myself, is, I think it's Paul Cannell. He's the Patriots Week Committee person, he's a veteran, and I've heard each of you say good things about him. He was very pleased to be on our team. He was very pleased to be on our team. What we'll do is we'll review the 18 applications. Each of us will give a number of names. We'll pick the top seven or eight to interview and then we will come to you with three names and you can do the final interview publicly. So I'm happy to work on that process. I think we've got a good team and hopefully we'll make your job very difficult in terms of picking the successor to Bob, the existing Veterans Agent. He'll also be helpful to us. He got some questions and as well as Rebecca from Personnel Director. So we'll, the team will meet prior to the interviews and we'll look at the questions and we'll make a fair and consistent interview for each of the candidates. And I also want to say that I spent a couple of opportunities at the Council on Aging. It's been a pleasure to visit that site. What a beautiful facility.
It's gorgeous down there.
I'm sorry, it's a community center, it's not a, it's not a senior center, but it's a great facility and I've enjoyed that. And as the board is aware, I've spent most of my time working on the warrants, although I didn't expect to present this tonight because I heard that the moderator comes to do that, but I'm, that wasn't a problem. But I'm spending most of my time now and a lot of the work for the compilation goes to Rebecca with the motions and all that kind of stuff. So we'll gear it up and finish it all and I will get the budget presentation online. So that concludes my brief, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any announcements?
Well, can we go over the motions and assign everyone their?
Sure, we can do that now.
Since everyone's here.
Do the special first?
Sure.
We don't have any on stage.
Usually the moderator does this.
Of the departments, okay.
Usually the moderator does this.
Article three is Bill's doing and the rest.
Well, Article one.
That'd be done by the library. Whoever the department head would do all of these.
Catherine Holbrook, yeah, we'll do that one.
So we will give a list, so the moderator knows who to call on for the motions, is that what's?
Yep. And two would be the Police Chief.
Yep.
And three is, you said Bill?
Yep. Does, excuse me, do department heads make motions too?
Yes.
If they're residents though, right?
Right.
Yep. And they're all, they're all residents, right?
Well, you have to be a resident, right?
Paula will do the Assessor one. Okay, so Fire Chief, Fire Chief. And then John Haines will do Article six. And that's the special.
Will that be two nights or one night you'll finish?
One night.
I'm not kidding, I'm kidding.
Don't even.
Half a night.
Have we had it two nights the last couple of years?
It's been a long time.
Yeah, half a night.
And I'll do Article one.
This would be Carol, I think.
Oh, you want that, Carol?
I don't care. Yep, if we're rotating, yep.
I'll do two.
Hold on.
Rebecca will keep you in order.
All right, so Carol and then we have David. And then three is a two-third vote. Bill. And then Michelle. It'll be four.
Budget, the budget article.
And then number five would be Carol. Number six will be Bill. Am I right?
Yes. You, Dave. Yeah, Dave for number six.
Oh, Dave is six?
Yep. Yeah, I'll grab that one.
And back to me.
Is that Glenn or Carol? Carol. Carol?
I should have said on nine. I think you're voting nine because it's a five-year contract. The money was already approved in this article for number nine. But anyway, that's Ellen from the school committee.
Yeah. So does anything need to change there?
No, no, no.
Oh. So who would do 11? Would that be the Selectmen?
Someone from the.
Be the petitioner.
Wouldn't it be the, yeah, the petitioner?
Petitioner.
It was the petitioner the first time around. We're the ones that asked for it this time around.
No, this is the.
Not this one.
Eleven, eleven of the.
Okay, yeah, that's.
That's a petitioner. Is there a name? It's usually the first name on the petition, but is there a name tied to that one?
John Babcock.
So I just have to find him and give it to him?
Yep.
Have him, Phil stand up and do it?
It was the petitioner, what?
From the recall now.
So 12, who are we on for?
I think that's Dave, right?
Glenn? You gotta read all the capitals?
Yes, start at 18.
13?
I think it's one.
So free cash?
It's the amount of money, so.
Oh, okay.
Be the school committee or something.
Oh, okay, so Ellen, you'll read 13?
That's the 13.
Yep. 14, Carol will be on you.
Do you now or me?
I think you're back to Bill.
Yeah, this is mine.
Yep, because Dave was 12. We should sit in that order, so.
Police Chief, yeah.
And who, Town Clerk?
She was here.
Our Chief. DPW, John Haines.
19, would that be Brian or John?
Brian, Kylie.
Brian.
Yeah.
I was all capitals. I present all the capitals, so 18, 19, 20, 22, 23, 24.
Okay.
26, 27, 28.
21?
No, that's 21.
You can do that one too if you want.
As long as you guys are going to fund it, I'm just going to have it.
Glenn, so you're 18 through what?
18 through 20, 22 through 33.
And I think 21, it's me again.
It is.
Hold on. Is that the number you said?
What's that? I'm not doing, I'm doing the rest except for 21.
Doing all of them, but 21.
All of them, 33.
Who's 21?
Ah, Carol.
And then 22 is Glenn.
Yep. 22 through 28 is capital budget.
And then it's the Planning Board show.
So 29 and 30 are capital budgets.
Yeah.
31, 32, do you do all of the borrowing too? Does the capital budget do all those?
I think so.
They do all the owning month.
I think they do all the way up to Article 33 is.
Glenn, you're all the way down to 33.
33, yes.
Yeah. Okay. Yep. We're going to pull that up?
Yep.
Handing for board discussions?
There is a board discussion to discuss the screening committee.
So what are your thoughts on the screening committee for the?
Did you, did we all get to meet with Bernie yet? I met with him last week, I know Dave, did you?
Yes.
Did you? When I met with him and we were talking about the makeup of the screening committee and I was saying, well, if we did, if we shot for doing seven, then I could pick two people, Dave could pick two people and you as chair could pick maybe two plus like a third, like the chairman or something like that. But it was just a thought and so I figured we should talk about it so that we can. They said that wasn't, having the screening committee wasn't, didn't seem like as time sensitive, that we didn't really need that in place until June, but given people's schedules.
I was going to wait until we meet with them Friday and continue that when we're all together because it's not that much, I thought it would be a lot of time involved on this with the screening committee.
Yeah.
They said maybe two days.
Two to three meetings, yeah.
And I'd rather, you know, talk to them as a group.
That's fine.
On Friday morning.
Okay, sounds good.
That's fine. I've been trying to think of people, so.
Yeah.
And if you're out there and you're watching and you're interested, let one of us know.
Yeah, we already had a few calls.
Yeah, I have, I have two.
Can I just make a suggestion? I would like to have a liaison from the Finance Committee, if possible, on the search team.
I mean, I think it's part of that, I think it was going to involve department heads and committees, but in a separate pool than the screening committee, I think.
Okay.
But I'm not sure, but we can clarify that.
Okay, great.
With committee paradigms when we need them again.
I know when I spoke.
Because certainly you need to be involved in the, in the process, just like the department heads do too.
Like the way Bernie had said, a lot of towns do it, is they have, you know, we have the department heads, school committee members, work with some of the candidates or review some of the resumes that come in. And then beyond that would just be a pool, a separate committee. So, you know, we get much more involvement, I think. And then from that separate committee, which would just be anyone in the public that's interested, then from that, they would submit names to the Board of Selectmen to interview.
Right, that's what it sounds like. I think it's good, my meeting with him was good. I think that the enthusiasm they have and the expertise is going to be a big benefit for all of us.
It seemed like they're ready to move pretty quick and, you know, help get Rocco out of here, so. No offense, but I know his wife wants him back, so.
No finesse.
I know in initial discussions, you looked a little concerned with an October date, so.
We already killed him for the summer and he's not going to be going to the beach anyway, so.
I gotta find where the superintendent goes, is that East Bridgewater can?
Oh, yeah. Just to remind everyone, the Community Forum will be here Wednesday night with the search firm, Community Paragon. And just come in, we really want as much input from people, what everyone's looking for in the next town administrator. You know, just, it's going to be just an open discussion. I know Cable's going to be here to record it. We'll be here, but like I said, it's just going to be a very loose, open discussion with the people from CPA, so.
We'll be here, but we are not running the show. This is all their, this is their dog and pony show to find out what people want, so please come.
Anything else?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Have a great one.